Meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Budget Committee for Clatsop County. As far as introductions, maybe we can just figuring out if we can go around the room here and and first have the Board of Commissioners introduce themselves and then and then have our Budget Committee members introduce themselves. I am Mark Weal, I'm a Clatsop County Commissioner and I'll go ahead and pass it on to Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, thank you everyone for being here. My name's Leanne Thompson, I'm a Clatsop County Commissioner from District Five.
And Commissioner Bangs?
Commissioner Courtney Bangs, I am Clatsop County Commissioner, District Four.
And Commissioner Toyoka?
Good morning, I'm John Toyoka, Clatsop County Commissioner for District Two.
And do we have Commissioner Webb? Not seeing her and hopefully she'll be able to join us shortly and then I'll go ahead and just start, we're first person on the camera there with David Ozer, if you want to go ahead and start on the Budget Committee.
Thank you, thank you, this is my second year on the County Budget Committee. I'm happy to be here and I want to compliment staff on the excellent document that they have prepared for us.
Thank you, Dan. And Norman?
Norman Brown, member of the Budget Committee for, I'm not even sure, three or four years, maybe a little longer. Pleasure to be here.
And I see Tita.
Yes, good morning, Tita Montero, and I've been on the Budget Committee, oh my gosh, babe, five or six years? So.
Yeah, thank you, Tina. Donell?
Good morning, everybody, Donell Davis here, local vet Astoria Animal Hospital, I have been on the Budget Committee, I believe this is my third year.
Yeah, thanks, Donell. Gretchen?
Hi Gretchen Allen, I believe this is my third year and I'm a local CPA in town.
Yeah, thank you Gretchen. Am I missing anybody? Okay, I'll go ahead and and move on to the Budget Training and I'll turn it over to our County Manager, Don Boone.
Thank you, Chair Quilam, members of the Board and Budget Committee. We're gonna be going through a little orientation on the budget, the Monica will be walking us through and then I'll start with the budget message pieces. I do want to just say that since we were sharing how many years we've been involved on as as Budget Committee Members, this is my thirty-fifth budget and so maybe thirty-fifth is is the budget, so every budget's different and certainly we have a story to tell with the proposed budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four and so we'll attempt to tell that budget as we talk about the actual budget message, so I do want to recognize staff at the department level within Budget and Finance, within the County Manager's Office. It's been a yeoman's work getting this budget put together, as we've stated before, we've been without a Budget and Finance Director through this budget season and so I just want to make sure that I acknowledge and voice my my appreciation for all the work staff has done to get this together, so I will turn it over to Monica.
Thank you, Don, and thank you Board and Budget Committee Members and so we're just gonna go through a quick little budget orientation to familiarize everybody with the process as well as the document and so Teresa, if you could go to the next slide, thank you. And today the topics that we'll be covering are the orientation, the countywide budget message, as well as the for-service district budget messages. A next slide please. So when we're going through the budget process and developing the budget, we are driven by local budget law and this is helping us to prepare, approve and adopt the and execute the annual budget document and so from some important objectives for us to remember is that establishing the procedures through the preparation and presentation helps us be fiscally responsible when we're when we're providing the services for these various programs, it helps us to provide estimates of revenues as well as expenditures and proposed taxes. It provides a method for us to be able to obtain public viewpoints in preparation of not just the document but fiscal policy. It provides controls for revenues and expenditures for the promotion of efficiency and economy in the expenditure of these public funds and it enables the public, the taxpayers and the investors to be apprised of the financial policies and the administration of the county. Next slide please. So as we're going through the document, just when we were preparing budgets at the department level, every department specifically for the general fund but also encouraged for other funds were presented with what's called a base budget amount and that means that the numbers included no new staff or reclassifications of staff and that the the only increases in the personnel costs were those that are anticipated with negotiated salary increases for step increases in COLAs as well as anticipated increases in medical retirement and other types of tax benefits. We also encourage all of our departments to make sure that they're pursuing outside revenue sources, making sure that their fee structures are updated to account for the services that they are providing, especially in those programs that are specifically fee-based programs. We also encourage all of our departments that they are not to be spending dollars just because they are there, we encourage all departments within the current fiscal year that if there are savings to be realized to keep those savings to be able to have that role into the beginning fund balance for the next fiscal year. And it is also a county policy not to backfill any shortfalls that occur in state or federal funding with county revenue. Next slide please. So we we continue to be fiscally responsible by making sure that we're controlling the size of our county government by making sure that we match our spending levels to those available resources. Maintain adequate reserves so that way if there are shortfalls that we aren't having to do anything about it in the current fiscal year that we have those reserves to continue to provide those programs and services. And that we pay for ongoing expenses from permanent funds and not volatile revenue sources or or one-time grants. Next slide please. So when we are estimating our future revenues for departments, there is a lot of estimating that takes place because oftentimes the Oregon Legislature does not approve their spending levels until June, which is when we are finalizing our budget process. And in addition to the state, the federal fiscal year begins in October with ours beginning in July. We also recognize that our state timber revenues can vary greatly from year to year and so for that reason, it is the County Board Policy that we use the lowest of the last fifteen years as a projection for our general fund revenues. And then also recognizing that there are times that outside revenues may fall short from the estimates in the middle of the year and so as those situations occur, we evaluate them on a case-by-case basis and make sure that we are monitoring any action that needs to be taken mid-year. The county must adopt a balanced budget for all funds and a balanced budget is defined as a budget where planned expenditures do not exceed the amount of resources available in accordance with state law. Next slide please. So there are services that as a county we must provide by law and those are elections, health, land use and planning, law enforcement and jail management, property deed reporting and survey mapping, road construction and maintenance, as well as tax assessment and collection. Many factors dictate how and where the county must spend these budgeted resources to provide those services. So as you're going through your document, you will see that whether you're looking at it in the printed version or the online version, there are tabs within each of those documents that breaks it all out, starting with the table of contents that can take you to each of those sections. The budget message, which is where we will be starting this process today, provides a summary of what the proposed plan for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year is and thus is based on the county services as well as the Board of Commissioners' goals. The Reader's Guide describes what information in each section of the document is being provided and and it breaks it down for the budget summary of each organizational unit, so that way you have a better understanding of what each department is trying to tell you based on that budget summary. The statistical and supporting section provides a general information about the county as an organization. This also provides an overview of county demographics as well as our community. And then it also provides you with the budget fund structure, so the budget fund we have funds, we have organizational units, we have functional areas and and it provides you with a breakdown of what each of those are. It also provides an overview of the general fund and what services are funded primarily by either discretionary or dedicated resources. It informs you of our policies that help drive the budget process and it also provides you with the Board Goals and the long-range financial plan that help make this a fiscally prudent budget process. The financial summary section provides charts and tables to explain visually the resources and expenditures that are making up the twenty-three, twenty-four budget year in comparison to prior year actuals. And the functional areas of the budget further describe what is being proposed by each department. We also have a section of inactive budgets and those are budgets that the county either no longer provides or the services have been rolled in with another program. And then the appendix includes a list of commonly used terms and definitions as well as acronyms, so if you're going through here and you keep seeing GF and you're wondering what that means, that stands for general fund and things such as that can be found in the appendix. And then it also includes the department work plans and their goals and measures based on those work plans in accordance with the Board's strategic plan. So before we move on to the budget message, are there any questions or final thoughts in regards to the information we just provided you all with? And I ask that either Chair Quila or somebody else, or you raise your hand because I can't see all of you. All right, if there are no questions, then I'm going to turn it over to Don.
Thanks Monica. So if we can go to the next slide then. So I just want to thank the citizen members of the Budget Committee for your time and for your commitment to this process, it's really important and 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 we value that. I want to thank the Board as well for the leadership that they provide every day and the strategic underpinnings that they provide us so that we make sure that the budget is is relevant to the community. So thank you both for your time. This is the management team that puts a lot of work into the budget, we have a few new members of the management team that are going through this for the first time, including Chen Cheng Wong, who's our Public Health Director, Terry Hendricks, who's the interim Public Works Director, has been through many budget processes, but the first one is the Public Works Director, we have, we're very lucky to be joined this week by our new Human Resources Director Rebecca Cameron. Very happy to have her on board, Justin Gibbs, our new Emergency Management Director and then of course Kyle Sharpton, who's the new Fair Manager, so we have a number of relatively new directors and they've all done a great job in the budget process along with all of those that have been part of this process repeatedly over the years, so thanks to all of them. So I'm gonna talk a little bit off-script, forgive me for that, but I, there's always a story to tell with the budget and so I just want to make sure that I tell the story of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget and part of what I'm gonna talk about is kind of the underpinnings of county government, so when I really think about what county governments do, I mean, there are services and they are traditional county services, many of which Monica mentioned in in a previous slide. But really ultimately the county does two things, the first thing the county does is we interpret public interest and that really defines what we do. And then we maintain public trust and we do that by how we provide services, so the what is public interest and the how is public trust. And so what we obsess about is doing both of those really well and at the end of it, what we hope is the county is relevant. The county is fiscally responsible, the county is providing the right services in the right manner, in the right place, we're identifying barriers to our service delivery and then we are addressing those barriers as as we can so that we can provide services to everybody. I always say we have a big tent, we provide services to everybody and so we need to make sure that we identify barriers and so then through that, what you hope is that you have a very legitimate local government that has the support of citizens. And so and I think we've done a good job of that here but that's something we are focused on every day and we want to be relevant and we want to be managed very well for that public trust factor. So the county does our work in really three different ways, we're a direct service provider, Monica identified a bunch of of services that the county is required to provide and so those are the traditional county services. We have partnerships, which means somebody may provide a service for us and an example of that would be CBH that is providing mental health and alcohol and drug treatment services on behalf of the county. And then there's those times when we support other agendas and a good example of that is that we don't do schools but oftentimes there is a need or a point of advocacy that the county can get behind a school district and help them advocate for a program, for funding and so having the county behind those efforts can be helpful as another district is doing their work. As as we know, the county is one of many local governments that is providing services in the community. We have a lot of special districts and sometimes people get a little confused about what the county's role is with the special districts. And one recent example being the Sunset Empire Transportation District and the issues they have been having and as I've told, you know, the press and I've told the public, it's a special district that has its own elected board, it's autonomous, it makes its own decisions and that's the way every special district is. In the county, we're certainly supportive and we support the agendas of the special district, but we're not providing direct services for those entities and so it is a partnership but they are independent. And so it's the fabric of all these different governments though that are providing all the necessary services in a community and so word one, there's many others and certainly we want to be relevant to those partner agencies also. Next slide please, thanks. So so one of the things that that you'll see in in the budget too and this is not unique to Clatsop County, it's a lot of counties go through the same challenges and that's the difference between county services and municipal services. The county is a countywide service provider, that's what allows us to be effective and efficient. We shy away from providing municipal level services because that's not really in our wheelhouse and unless those municipal services have a specific funding source, it actually becomes a tax equity issue if we're spending money for certain municipal type services with the general county revenue sources and so so we shy away from providing municipal services, there are certain parts of the community that would love to have the county pay more for these municipal services but it would create a lot of issues for us if if we did and the fact is if some portion of the county is interested in municipal services, then they have the option of looking at a corporation, special districts, there are other mechanisms, so I'm just reinforcing and we certainly reinforce it through the budget that we're a countywide service provider, so we're using taxpayer dollars that come in from all these different sources and we're serving everybody geographically. We're not providing different service levels for different parts of the county. Next. Part of what the Board has been working on the last three years is our strategic planning process, which is an annual planning process in the budget message. It provides an overview of some of the priorities that the Board has discussed for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. They fall into five categories, governance, infrastructure, economic development, environmental quality and social services. We track all of all of our projects and we have many projects that are not part of the strategic plan that we also track. But this gives us guidance and then we make sure that the budget reflects the Board's priorities, so. Next slide please. So some, I'm gonna go off-script now and kind of talk a little bit about this next budget year. So when I look at the budget, the way that I see the county right now is that we are in a stable financial position. It's a stable position that has a lot of asterisks and those asterisks really are associated with risk. And so some of the risks that we are looking at is what we've talked about before, which is the Habitat Conservation Plan. We continue to see unfunded federal and state mandates. The impacts of tourism don't pay. Tourists are not paying for the impacts of tourism and so we are working with the legislature and with lobbyists to help tell the story so that hopefully a funding formula can change that would benefit tourism-intensive counties. We've been in in an inflation cost escalation period. For 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 Clatsop County, the cost of living drives and impacts the budget. If you just look at our wages, one percent increase in in wages is is about a five hundred thousand dollar hit to the county and so we have collective bargaining agreements that provide a ceiling and a floor for the CPI, if the CPI is under two and a half, our employees get two and a half, if CPI is over four and a half, our our employees get four and a half. But for every one percent of growth any fiscal year, that's about five hundred thousand dollars and so when we are are in a high CPI period, obviously there is impacts on the county's budget. And the reason why we have reserves at the level we do is to ride out these periods. The worst thing we could do is be a volatile government that is always restricting and expanding based upon one year's experience or one and a half years' experience or two years. We need to be an organization that has a long enough runway that we can respond to these fluctuations, which we have no control over. As much as I wish I could control the cost factors for Clatsop County, I can't and so and so you know, we are in a high inflation period and so it is impacting us. We will get through this and at some point we will see a lower cost of living, which will then reduce county expenditures or at least not reduce them, but the escalating factor will be less. And so that's why we have the reserve to help us ride this out, when you look at our our budget we're always gonna be in a deficit spending mode because we're budgeting everything. We only spend about ninety percent of the appropriations in any given year. And so that's where the projection model paints the best picture of where we think we will be. And so and the projection models show us above the Board minimum of twenty percent fund balance for, you know, for for the next four years. And of course, we manage the organization three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And so as things change, we make course corrections throughout the year to make sure that the fund balance and and the total available reserves exceeds the Board's policy. And again, we do this because it's the right thing, but we also do it to to make sure that we are viable and stable and that we will be available to provide services when the public needs us. And so we take that that responsibility really seriously. But that's where the reserves are so impactful. And again, this has been an interesting time with the high inflation rates, we've been seeing the supply chain issues, the fuel cost issues. But we are in stable financial position even given all of those factors. The biggest concern I have right now moving forward is that we need the legislature to see the challenges that rural counties are facing. There are some very specific challenges we are facing and we need them at some point to really recognize them, both through how they formula and distribute the transit lodging tax dollars to whether they're gonna assist the the Forest Trustland Counties if an HCP is adopted that you know, based on our estimates could be pretty devastating for all the taxing jurisdictions. And then we just need more support on some of the issues that we're faced with like housing, homelessness, transportation. And so so there's a lot of challenges out there, but our financial position right now allows us the time to navigate what those challenges are, as I think everybody knows, these are not linear challenges and these are not you know, challenges that we that we address you know, singularly, these challenges are they're they're kind of in a pot and you don't know exactly what's gonna come out of the pot but you know that they're that they're there and sometimes they come out less than you feared and sometimes they come out more than you feared. But it's a whole pot of of issues and that's how we manage the county, we identify all these potential threats. We don't overreact to any one of them, but we are positioned to react at the right time with the right measure when we have to and so so there's a lot in the pot right now and you know, I wish there was less in the pot. I wish there was just water in the pot, but that's not the pot that we get to deal with, so. So but really what my point is 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 that we are very aware of what these threats are, we're very aware where the county needs to be financially and we are gonna manage all of that to make sure that there is no point where the county's not in a stable position to provide the services that the community needs. But it's not gonna be easy and I think the Board is keenly aware of that, given the buy-off threat and the HCP threat and all those other things, so. So there's a lot happening under the surface of this budget, which I know you'll keep in in mind as we walk through this process. You can go to the next slide, Teresa. So I'm I'm gonna stop there and see if there's any questions just about my my overview right now from any of the Budget Committee Members or the Board.
I can't really see everybody, but I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, so now we're gonna go through the numbers part of it and I'm gonna turn it over to Monica so she can start that that part of the presentation.
Thanks, Don. So building on some of what we touched on during the orientation piece as well as as well as things that Don just covered, as we went through the process of developing the budget document, there are many things that we do take into consideration. As we went through the process of developing the budget document, there are many things um that we do take into consideration. Um on an annual basis, um regardless of the economic factors, but then also like Dawn mentioned um. In addition to the economic factors, so the general fund specifically um is one of the areas that we uh really try to. Um focus on because that is where the majority of the discretionary dollars are spent to provide those required county services. And so we do so um over a multi-year forecasting horizon process. Um looking at the priority programs and service levels as determined by the Board of Commissioners. And then we, as mentioned, we um take those policies and try to maintain our reserves within a range of twenty to thirty percent. With no less being than, no less being twenty percent. Uh we try to maintain status quo staffing levels, but if necessary, we seek. We seek reductions um in staff through manners such as attrition. Um as well as other expenditure expenditure reductions uh whenever possible. We utilize what's called the county's indirect cost allocation plan in an effort to appropriately recover some of those full costs. Um associated with overheads such as um programs that aren't generally revenue makers. Such as human resources, information technologies, uh budget and finance, the county manager's office, et cetera. Um we pursue revenue sources to the fullest extent possible, like Dawn mentioned, we are um working with our lobbyists at the legislative level. To see if there's more flexibility in those transient lodging tax dollars. Um we recognize that general fund dollars, as previously mentioned, shouldn't be backfilling those state and federal programs. That fall short of what uh the state and federals were previously providing us. And then again, we rate, we uh use no more than the fifteen-year low of the timber harvest for um general fund dollars. Anything beyond the fifteen-year low is either um. Utilized for those projects such as special projects associated with um. General Fund depart, general fund org units as well as um. Being transferred into the general fund stabilization account for when when those times happen that the reserves do fall short. Next slide, please. So this proposed twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year excluding those four service districts is ninety-eight million nine hundred and two thousand three eighty. Which is slightly down compared to last year's um budget of approximately a hundred million dollars. And the proposed budget excluding the contingencies that we set aside is approximately seventy-two million. Which is also a decrease from last year's um amount of seventy-four million. And these decreases are primarily a result of um a six-point-six-million-dollar reduction in the. Costs associated with completing the new jail, as well as um not transferring funds into the general fund stabilization account. These uh decreases are offset by increases. There's approximately an increase of two-point-six million, and this is associated with those negotiated. Cost of living increases as well as um increases in uh retirement costs and the newly required uh state FMLA um costs as well. There's also an increase um in materials and services of approximately two-point-seven million. Um as well as for special payments with in the amount of one-point-one million, and this is appro. This is um primarily associated with about seven-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars. In pass-through funding from the state for mental health services. Next slide, please. So the um the revenue side of things is uh seeing a um. Increase in current year revenue for all funds of approximately one-point-two million. And this includes um setting aside approximately seven-point-two million in what is unappropriated fund balance. So therefore, those reserves that are not being budgeted in any way. And that primarily sits in um the Public Works Fund as well as some in the General Fund and Special Projects Fund. There is an increase in charges for services, and this is primarily attributed to the um. The Public Works Department taking on the management of our county fleet vehicles. And so this is um internal revenues that gets charged to um the different departments for providing those services. And then um we have also seen an increase of approximately seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars associated with. Better interest rates for those reserves that are sitting um in in accounts. Uh we are able to earn more interest on them than we have been recently. Um these increases, however, are offset by decreases. Um the intergovernmental state revenue shows a decrease of approximately one-point-three million dollars. And this is primarily a result of the reduction of the state highway conversion funds that Public Works receives. Next slide, please. So um our personnel services, uh the total county-wide excluding the service districts is approximately thirty-five million. And this represents fifty percent of the total county-wide budget excluding our contingencies. This is up slightly from the prior year of by about two-point-six million dollars. Um we are increasing or proposing to increase um from two-hundred-and-sixty-two FTE. To uh two-hundred-and-sixty-five uh point-six FTE. Um and I will be going over where those are uh when we get into the functional areas as well. We are anticipating uh proposed COLA increases in the amount of four and a half percent. And this is based on the anticipated CPI West uh index, which is used for our bargaining contracts. Um and then, as mentioned, um the the county. We have five bargaining groups, and then we also have management and unrepresented. Um of our uh existing staff, approximately seventy-four percent of our FTE is represented. And the other twenty-six percent is management or unrepresented positions. Next slide, please. So our proposed um budget expenditures are broken out in um other categories as well as personnel, which we just went over. And that includes materials and services. Um we're seeing an increase by approximately two-point-eight million over the prior year. And again, um some of this is associated with the county taking on our fleet management services. But also based on inflationary costs, for example, we're um estimating approximately. Three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars more um in fuel costs for next year over the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Um as previously mentioned, the special payments increase, um and that is primarily associated with um. The county's portion, or sorry, the uh seven-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand pass-through funds for the mental health services. Um and then also. An increase of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to be paid towards the county's unfunded liability for our PERS retirements. Um the intent of paying down that unfunded liability is to help offset those future rate increases. Um that come with having a higher unfunded liability percentage. Um capital outlay, as previously mentioned, decreases by about six-point-six million or forty-nine-point-two percent over the prior year. And again, this is primarily associated with the completion of the jail, which was a multi-year project. Um those. Those um decreases are offset by some increases in accordance with the board's um strategic plan. And one of those being um our space feasibility, and so we anticipate um some major capital projects in this coming year, which include. Re renovations to the uh county courthouse to provide a more secure entrance. As well as um its expansion of the uh county services buildings for public health and um. General services and utilizing what was formerly the jail, but is now um being referred to for the time being as the Duane Street Annex. Um transfers sees a decrease of about one-point-four million, and again, this is primarily associated with um. The decrease in transfers from the general fund to the general fund stabilization account. And um based on our uh board policy, um contingency is increasing by approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. And this is uh when your expenditures increase, the board policy of maintaining a ten percent contingency therefore increases as well. And next slide, please. So um as I previously mentioned, the general fund is the the fund that receives. The majority of the discretionary revenue, and since the discretionary revenue tends to be a little bit more volatile. Um that is where the focus of our conversation will be um for the next few slides, um speaking to the general fund. So the proposed general fund increases by approximately one-point-one million. And um this is primarily again associated with um increases for, or I apologize, um. Revenues associated with increases in property taxes. Um the county for a number of years was um in a what was called a strategic investment plan agreement with the GP Wana Mill. And therefore, they were able to receive a tax red, property tax reduction for the investment that they put into the mill out there. Um that SIP agreement has expired, and so now those um. Those assets will now be um added back onto the property tax rolls, and so therefore we're seeing a. A significant increase more than what um is allowed uh by Measure Fifty in regards to the three percent. And then also because of the increased um development that we have um that. That also makes your property tax values increase more than the Measure Fifty-three percent. And next slide, please. So in regards to the expenditures, um personnel services, as previously mentioned, is increasing by about one-point-nine million or eight and a half percent. Um we've gone over why that is primarily associated with cost of living. Um there is an increase of approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand in materials and services. And again, this is primarily associated with inflationary costs as well as increases associated with our general liability insurance. Um and then also our contract for medical services that we receive uh in our jail um. For uh mental health as well as just overall um physical health of our adults in custody. Um special in special payments increases by approximately a hundred-and-fourteen-thousand dollars. Um this is associated with our transient room tax dollars that uh we receive and uh. Um that is associated with public road and drainage improvements, and so this uh work that's done on those. Is done through our Public Works Department, um and since we are not allowed to. Pay for um public roads using county road funds, these funds um are are spent for those road improvements. Um we also, as previously mentioned, see an increase in general fund contingency based on that ten percent board policy. Next slide, please. So the general fund um includes use of unassigned fund balance in the amount of five-point-three million excluding our contingency. And though we are are um anticipating in the budget that there is use of this unassigned fund balance, as Dawn mentioned. Um we only generally spend about ninety percent of what is budgeted. It is not the. Uh county's intention to one, spend the content contingency reserves that we have. But two, as previously mentioned, when there are savings that can be realized, departments are to realize those savings and not spend those excess dollars. Um recognizing the um current economic factors as well as future impacts of. Reduced timber harvesting, um we will continue to monitor throughout the fiscal year. Um where other savings can be realized. Right now, the unappropriated fund balance for the general fund is approximately ninety thousand. But as previously mentioned, we anticipate that revenues will come in higher and expenditures will come in less. And so that amount that will roll into the next fiscal year will be greater um. And uh be more than that twenty percent minimum. Next slide, please. So staff recognize our role as good stewards of the county resources and um continuing to maintain those long-term. Um fiscal responsibilities, and as you see here, we have a fiscal year in um twenty-four. And then going out to fiscal year twenty-nine, while it does show less than the twenty percent. We adjust accordingly, and we will make those changes so that we are not going below that twenty percent that is the board policy. Um these forecasts do um take into consideration what. What we anticipate to actually occur, um so as previously mentioned. We anticipate that our unassigned fund balance that we're using or our fund balance that we're using is about five-point-five million. But we will actually come in less than that. Dawn, did you want to say something?
Chair Quayle, members of the board and budget committee, just wanna to um just reinforce that there's there's really three places that are housing. The reserve dollars. One is in the contingency. The other is in the unappropriate ending fund balance, which that number is really important for what the carry forward is at the end of a fiscal year. And then the third is the general fund uh stabilization fund, um so. So those are the three pieces to to the reserve puzzle. So it's the contingency, the unappropriate any fund balance, and and the revenue stabilization fund, so. As we look at those outer years where where the graph shows um that we're bu- below. The twenty percent, what I would say is we have no idea what those years really look like. Uh we're making projections um that are very uncertain um at that point. And the reality is every year we're gonna manage the organization so that the beginning fund balance is actually in a better place than what we had budgeted for, so. Um I'm just gratified that that graph isn't what I've seen in some previous. Um graphs in in some previous years that show a negative fund balance. That would never ha- happen. We will get to that minimum reserve level. Um but those three places are where the where the reserves lie. Thank you.
Slide, please. So this slide here kind of talks about some of the key assumptions that we um use when developing these projections. Um for the general fund, and that includes, you know, assessed value growth remaining stable. Um projecting the fifteen-year low, transient lodging tax remaining stable, and then status quo state and federal funding. And then it also looks at steady increases in regards to expenditures for um personnel costs, estimated inflationary costs. And then overall spending at an average of about ninety-two percent and contingencies generally going unspent. So I just got done mentioning the use of um fund balance for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, and so as an example. In the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, we anticipated a use of approximately six-point-four million of um fund balance. But um we approximate at year-end that the actual use will be closer to the being around one and a half to two million dollars. And so again, that's because we we project that we will actually be spending less. And our revenues will come in slightly higher. So again, to reiterate for twenty-three, twenty-four. While we're assuming an eight-point-six million use, however, uh five. Approximately five million if you exclude contingency, we again anticipate that when we finish out twenty-three, twenty-four. Will be closer to just using that one and a half to two million range of the uh fund balance amount. Okay, next slide, please. So now um we'll get into talking about those proposed expenditures by functional area. And a functional area includes those departments that are both general fund and um what's called a special revenue fund. And so um the the functional areas are put together through logical groupings and. In so some are larger than others and some are smaller than others. Um if you were to exclude the um county county service districts as previously mentioned. These functional areas listed here are what comprise approximately ninety-eight-point-nine million dollars of the budget. Next slide, please. So um these increases that we're anticipating um for. For this net, or sorry, decreases and increases for this next fiscal year. Um that six-point-six million that um we spoke of in the uh land use, housing and transportation um. And capital for the jail, um that is seen in overall decrease. and capital for the jail, that is seen an overall decrease of two point three million dollars. And again, as I mentioned, some of that is offset with other projects that we are anticipating for this coming year. And there is also a decrease or there sorry, there are increases or decreases that are offset by increases. And so when you look at public safety and just public safety and justice, there are increases in this in approximately seven hundred and forty two thousand. But something to remember here as well is this FTE is our highest FTE count countywide. And so when we're looking at overall personnel costs, which make up about fifty percent of our budget, when you have a functional area that comprises the majority of the FTE, it's also going to see significant increases. And the the increases in public health as previously mentioned are primarily associated with some of those pass through dollars. And then the culture and recreation is primarily associated with increased contingency in the the fairgrounds budget. So while there are decreases in some areas and increases in other areas, it's important to note that the board's strategic plan touches many of these areas. And the goals that they have for this coming twenty three, twenty four fiscal year are being addressed countywide throughout all functional areas. Some of those are going to be addressed using existing staff time. And then others will be utilizing contracted services and utilizing some of the ARPA dollars to accomplish those goals as well as special projects funds. Next slide please. So when we're talking about culture and recreation, this is comprised of our parks department, which includes our parks and land acquisition as well as parks maintenance and our fair and general operation. The proposed budget increases approximately three hundred and seventy four thousand. And again, this is primarily attributed to the increase in contingency for the fair and expo for some of the larger projects that they anticipate coming up in future years to be able to provide more event space. And the the funding that this functional area receives is primarily dedicated funding. And and the two hundred and fifty six thousand or eight percent that is discretionary is primarily associated associated with the parks maintenance department, which is a general fund department. Next slide please. So land use, housing, transportation, economic development and capital is primarily dedicated resources. And again, that is because this includes our public works department, which is dedicated road funds as well as our building codes division, which is a fee based program. So ninety four percent of this is dedicated and six percent is discretionary. Overall, there's a decrease of about two point four million, which we previously mentioned is primarily associated with that capital decrease. This functional area includes other general fund programs as well, such as surveyor and the county tourism. But then it also includes other smaller programs such as bike paths, which is again dedicated funding. It includes fisheries, which Clatsop County is the only county to provide a fishery program in the state of Oregon. And then it also includes a video lottery, which is for economic development and our industrial development revolving fund, which focuses on the North Coast Business Park area. And some of the projects that have been identified through the board's strategic planning process that are reflected in this budget and specifically in the special projects fund is the work to be done on camp comprehensive plans goals sixteen, seventeen and eighteen pertaining to environmental quality. And then as previously mentioned, it focuses on some of the renovation work to be done in the eight hundred and eight twenty buildings as well as the former jail or the Duane Street Annex. And the intention behind these improvements that we're making on these buildings is to make sure that we are fully accessible to the public and that it is easier and safer for the public to access all the different services that we are providing. The dedicated dollars in the video lottery fund, there are work work that we do, Dawn previously mentioned in regards to those partnerships. And so there is seventy thousand dollars that we have budgeted to go towards Cedar for economic development in our county. And most of the remaining funds that make up this functional area, they maintain a status quo budget. There is a proposed increase of one point three FTE in this functional area. A portion of that is for administrative support within the public works department, specifically for the fleet management as well as other public works road admin work. And then also an additional mechanic to help with taking on the county's fleet. And overall, this functional area sees an increase of fifty from fifty five point three FTE in the current year to fifty six point six FTE. Next slide please. So the general government, fifty two percent of this is dedicated resources with forty eight percent being discretionary. And overall, there's a decrease of about one point one million. And again, this is associated with not transferring funds from the general fund to the general fund stabilization account. Most budgets here are status quo. There are some areas where it indicates that there is an increase in FTE. And if you all recall, in the twenty two, twenty three budget process, we were, the county was in the process of seeking new county council and we were looking at going back to a contract contract position. We were fortunate enough to go out and find a qualified county council. So rather than having that be a contracted position, the board decided to make that once again an FTE. So while it shows as an increase of one FTE, it it's something that is already existing. And we we appreciate our new county council, Anthony Pope, who's been with us now for several months and the work that he's doing for us. In addition, there is a point two five FTE that is reflected in this functional area. And again, that is an existing FTE that was previously in the public health department to provide oversight for the mental health contract. And that that is not taking as much time as allocated. And so we're shifting some of that FTE to provide support for some of the other other strategic goals that the board has established for this coming fiscal year through the planning process. Next slide please. So for public health, as previously mentioned, this also includes mental health as as part of our public health services. Ninety eight percent of this is dedicated and two percent is discretionary. The increase again is primarily related to that pass through funding for the mental health services. And there's also an increase of approximately three hundred and sixty three thousand dollars. And this is seen in our drug and alcohol prevention program. And this is for increased community outreach, engagement and data collection. And the county was part of the opioid lawsuit. And so we are seeing significant increases in revenues to address the impacts of opioid addictions. There is also an increase in tobacco prevention program of about a hundred and thirteen thousand. And this is to focus on community based initiatives around tobacco prevention cessation and health equity. Next slide please. Public safety and justice. And as you can see here in this picture, this is our new jail facility located out in Warrenton. So hopefully most of you got to tour that facility prior to our adults in custody getting moved out there. Forty eight percent of this is dedicated and fifty two percent is discretionary. And as previously mentioned, there's about a seven hundred and forty two thousand increase from the prior year. There's also an increase of point nine FTE being proposed. Point five of that is in our animal control division to provide more kennel worker support. Point three three of that is in our juvenile department. And point oh six is for additional admin support in our district attorney's office. The these, all of these positions, these increases that total point nine are not new new positions, they're just increasing part time FTE to be closer to or at a full time level. There's also an increase in personnel costs in our emergency management budget. This is not specific to an FTE, but this is specific to being able to provide training for temporary helpers. So that way, in the event of a natural disaster, we have trained volunteers or trained temporary helpers who can come in and do the work necessary to operate an EOC. And this is also in accordance with the board's strategic plan for coordinated disaster response. So our service districts, as previously mentioned, we have four of those. Those include the rural law enforcement, road district, Westport sewer district and four H and extension district. Three of the four districts are taxing districts. And those include rural law, road and four H. And the Westport sewer district is strictly a fee fee based district. So the overall, next slide please. The overall increase for the for the for special districts combined is approximately two hundred and ninety thousand dollars or three percent over the prior year. And again, this is mainly attributable to an increase in materials and services and capital outlay. And the rural law enforcement district, they pay a percentage of the personnel costs associated with the enforcement division as well as the sheriff admin support and marine patrol divisions. So when you see increase in personnel costs associated with that functional area, then you see an increase in the transfer that goes out. Additionally, the road district transfers their funds into the public works, road maintenance and construction to pay for the maintenance and construction of county roads. So there is an anticipated increase beginning balance in twenty three, twenty four. And so those funds will be getting transferred and show up as an expense reflective in the twenty three, twenty four budget. Next slide please. So the rural law enforcement division, as previously mentioned, I got ahead of myself. Those increased costs that are reflected in the other functional areas within the countywide budget are reflected here as well. This division or this district is supported by a tax levy with a rate of point seven one nine five per thousand. And since it is a taxing district, it also receives timber revenue. The budget reflects an overall increase of twenty thousand dollars or less than one percent. Next slide please. The road district number one, they are supported by a property tax levy of a rate of one point oh one seven five per thousand. And again, they receive timber revenues to help support the work that they do. The the funds that are transferred from the road district, as previously mentioned, go into fund oh oh two and the organizational unit of thirty one twenty. And that information for that budget can be found on page three hundred and fifty one. The overall budget again increases as a result of increased beginning balance. Next slide please. The Westport sewer service district, as mentioned, is just a fee district. And so they are one hundred percent fee based. In addition to, we did provide them with some ARPA grant funds to help do some work on aging infrastructure out there. The board approved back in the twenty twenty one fiscal year to distribute some of those ARPA dollars for upgrades. In addition to, there is a Westport community plan. And that the funding from that was from an agreement with the Wana GP Wana Mill. And so there were also funds that were redistributed to help offset some of the costs associated with these infrastructure improvements. There are also contingency increases in this budget based on those additional dollars to provide ongoing support to to continue to doing this work. There this as a this sewer district has a number of septic tanks that have have to be pumped out on a regular basis. And so trying to catch up on some of the pumping of those tanks as well as replacing the aging ultraviolet treatment system is some of the work that's being done out there. Next slide please. I apologize because I am missing my four H and extension district budget. And so I will touch on that for all of our four H and extension district budget committee members. I apologize. And so the four H and extension district budget committee is also supported by a tax levy and timber dollars. The county contracts with OSU to provide the services, the extension services, which includes four H and the master gardener program and the C grant program. And so they are are seeing an increase in their contingency amount as well. And that is because they had a number of tenured staff that have retired. And so the costs associated with hiring new staff is less. Part of that is because the the PERS rate that is paid for them as well as the coming in at a lower rate of pay because of just not having the the years of experience as prior tenured staff. So our discretionary resources. We've talked a lot about these and how important they are because this is what the board. These are, these are dollars that are not dedicated by rule, law, contract. And they are able to be spent at the discretion of the board. And it's important to recognize that the primary source of discretionary resources for the general fund, as previously mentioned, come from those beginning balances, property taxes, timber revenues and indirect charges. Almost all of the discretionary revenues that we receive go into the general fund, but not all general fund resources are discretionary. The discretionary resources for all funds totals approximately twenty nine million dollars, which is twenty seven percent of the hundred and nine countywide budget, including the service districts. Next slide please. So in closing, the proposed budget strikes a balance between meeting current service and service level demands and maintaining prudent reserve levels in anticipation of future revenue impacts. It is a process that 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 department staffs really work together on. It begins back in November with budget and finance staff compiling information as well as the assessment and tax department. And then departments having to work diligently January through March to compile their proposed budgets and going through a number of meetings. So we appreciate all of the work that staff put into this as well as the board of commissioners and budget committee members. We are a proud team in service to Clatsop County community and we want to do our best with the tax dollars that we receive from our residents in Clatsop County. So that is all that I have and we will open it up for any questions and thoughts. And so I will turn it over to Chair Quayle.
Thank you very much, Monica. Really appreciate the job that you and Dawn have done to put this together. I know that we're down a finance director and so this is an extra heavy lift and a great opening presentation and budget message. So thank you so much. David Ozer.
Thank you. I I my I also certainly applaud the work that staff has done. My question is, I'm having, I've had a hard time quite understanding the mass of the reserves. So the reserves include the contingency, unappropriated fund balance and the stabilization fund. And they are a percentage of expenditures. But I would like to know what the what the numbers are that are in those categories of amounts so that I can so that I can understand what the percentages are and what it's a percentage of.
And I can send the budget committee and board the totals that are in the budget for for each of those in regards to, like I mentioned, there's about ninety thousand in unassigned fund balance. I think that the general fund stabilization account is going to have approximately four and a half or five million. Um I think that the general fund stabilization account is going to have approximately um four and a half or five million dollars. Um and then the contingency is approximately three and a half million dollars. Um so I can put together all of those numbers. I apologize, I don't have them off the top of my head. I will say that when we go out and we're looking at the future years for projections. Again, we anticipate that those contingencies will be going unspent. So when we're looking at that chart that um Dawn mentioned that no longer shows a deficit. It is taking those future projections, it is taking those unspent dollars into consideration.
Is it possible, um Monica, when you send out these these calculations? To show them in in those two columns, that is to say, what's what's in the budget and what you in one column? And what you expect the re- reality to be in in another column?
Yeah, I can put something together and see if it meets the request that you have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I I'm doing the happy dance. I'm doing the seated version of the happy dance. Because this is such uh an extraordinary improvement over what I've been pleading for. Um if I'd known we were going to give our bona fides to be a budget commenter, I would have told you this is my ninth Clatsop County budget. But before that, I was a state agency head in Oregon. Before that, I was a state agency head in Alaska. Before that, I chaired the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission. Who had final sign-off authority on all the annual operating budgets of all the municipal corporations in Multnomah County. The city of Portland, Trimet, the port, on and on and on, every single one. So we supervise CPA staff as citizen budget overseers who are looking for efficiency and effectiveness. I also went to work for a county board of commissioners back in the dark ages of nineteen sixty-eight. So I had a sense of what I know, David, I saw those eyebrows fly up. That was forever ago. But I began my professional career knowing what a county board of commissioners was supposed to do. And what I see is extraordinary progress in the members of this county board of commissioners, our county manager. And then flowing from that, all the rest of the staff appreciating what it is that a county board of commissioners is supposed to do. I spend, I would say all day long, every day. That's a kind of an exaggeration, but not really. Looking for additional resources for Clatsop County. Because what we see are the fixed resources. When we had the introduction at the beginning of our document, it said that um Clatsop County is a is a charter county. We have a home rule charter. We, dear colleagues, are the only county in the state of Oregon that does not pay its county commissioners. To do the job of being the members of the governing body. What makes us a good return on the investment is the extent to which we go out and seek additional revenue. That provides the return on the investment. And I don't spend a lot of time telling you how wonderful I am or tooting my own horn. But look, I bring home millions of dollars for Clatsop County because I participate in the organizations and create the relationships. That have me seated at the table with voice, vote, or even leadership. In setting the agenda to bring home additional resources to Clatsop County. I know we don't want to spend a lot of time talking about the larger picture, the context. I'm not trying to talk about what's wrong. I'm trying to talk about what's missing. And that is the capacity to have a governing body that can devote full time to generating additional resources. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Do we have any other comments from the members of the commission or of the budget committee? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Um any additional uh comments from our staff?
If if I may, Chair, um prior to, since we are wrapping up a little bit early. Um and if uh you've all had a chance by um next Wednesday when we meet again. If you do have questions that are going to require a little bit of research. If you could send them to me like David has, so that way we can come into the meeting. And I can try and be as prepared as possible to address those questions for you all in the public meeting.
Yes, I completely encourage that as well. If you do have some clarification questions, please send them to Monica so that she has an opportunity to respond. And then we can uh move uh through the budget uh expeditiously. Any other comments, questions from anyone? Okay, not seeing any, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good rest of your Wednesday. Take care.